Okay, you're all set, who's ever chairing, I guess, from online?
Mike, are you okay to chair, or shall I do it?
I think, do you mind doing it, Brianna?
That's fine, yes, I'll go ahead and do it. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, it's September 30th, 2024, this is the GBOs work session regarding the nonprofit recreation grant presentations. I call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I am Brianna Sullivan, Co-Chair and Fire Department Supervisor. I'll read the land acknowledgement. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska, whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood, situated between the areas known to be Denina and Alutik homeland, respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be a part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples. Kyle, could you please do the roll call?
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Present.
Mike Edgington?
Here.
Brian Burnett?
Here.
Jennifer Wingard?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any disclosures this evening?
Just the standard disclosure that I've donated to multiple nonprofits in the valley and a few years ago did some coaching work for Four Valleys.
Thank you, Mike, for the disclosure. And as this is a presentation and the nature of our small town with very generous volunteers that are on this board for their time, I would rule that you can participate. I also have a disclosure that I have donated to Four Valleys and I volunteer, coach, and teach at Four Valleys different times of the year. And...
Would you like me to temporarily take the chair to deal with that?
Yes, please. I think that's my disclosure.
For the same reasons before, we'll, we consider that, that won't disqualify you from participating.
Okay, thank you. I'll take the chair back. Any disclosures in the room? Just go for it if you have any, don't have to raise your hand.
I have the same ones as you, as has already been, as someone who has donated in the past, Little Bears and I think others here, and then also upcoming Volunteer for Challenge.
Thank you, Jennifer. I would rule for the same reasons as previous that you may participate today through the presentations and do not have a conflict. Okay, if there are no more disclosures, we shall begin with announcements. Parliamentary Procedure Training is Tuesday, October 8th at 6:00 PM. And the GBOs Rules and Procedure Work Session is TBA. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussion stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Right now, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
To approve?
I'll second this, Jennifer.
Thank you. Any discussion? No objections, agenda is approved. So we'll start with the review of the grant process. Margaret? If you'd want, take it away, please.
Sure. If we go over into the meeting packet, the applications this year came with instructions and information on the grant program that looks a lot like it has in previous years. It outlines the insurance requirements and then on the bottom page three, I think it is, is evaluation material or evaluation criteria that matches information that's in supervisor packet additionally. And there's a copy that's up online, I didn't print them all out for everybody though, if you want one, I've got some spares. And the application checklist, and then following that, I think page five is an update that we have based on information that came and was passed at the GBOs meeting last month, changing the funding structure a bit. And so I think that part will be Mike's to articulate.
Thank you, Margaret. Mike, would you like to go over that real quick?
Yeah, very quickly. This is a partial history. Margaret previously provided the history all the way back to, I think, 2000, maybe even before. So in the early 2000s, there was wide variety of different organizations receiving funding. Over the last 10, 15 years, they've been a smaller, more consistent group. So this is analysis from about 2010 onwards. Basically, first several years, we had, we varied the amount of grants we gave each year, it's very much dependent on who applied. There were no fixed grants. Then in 2017, the board, I think under Kyle's suggestion, allocated a fixed amount of money to the grants. And that helped with the budgeting process because we could fix that when we did the initial grant, when we did our initial budget in September. We also allocated a fixed grant to Four Valleys at $20,000. Then in, then in 2020, we increased the funding amount a bit, increased the amount of Four Valleys and also the amount of competitive grants. And as you can see at the bottom, effectively had the, you know, given the typical applications we had, it effectively sort of boosted the, each time it boosted the average grant a little bit. And in this round with the budget we just passed, we increased the, the total amount again by a little bit more, $65,000. And also gave a, set a fixed grant to three bodies, so Four Valleys as before, and then also Little Bears and GVT. And that again leaves, leaves $22,500 for the competitive grants. And if we had the same typical applications, that would be again a slightly increased average grant from previous years. This is written down as timeline as well and in that table. So basically, it's pretty much the same as last year, except we are allocating a fixed grant to Little Bears and Glacier Valley Transit. And then increasing the overall amount a little.
Thank you, Mike. Margaret, do you need to go over the instructions and evaluation criteria?
Um, not. I think that the instructions are available to the supervisors. If you have any questions, you're welcome to come to me or Kyle and, and ask them. If we go to what I think is probably pages seven and eight. So page seven is how the breakdown looks right now, based on the requests that we have and the evaluation document that's in the packet, has Little Bears and GVT listed at the hard funded amounts of $10,000 and $7,500. And then the rest are the current requests. So you have $27,000 and a little bit more in requested funding and you have $22,500 to divide up. So the way that that works is that supervisors will make their recommendations at the next GBOs meeting. And it's important that your recommendations stay within the total budget that you have available. So, and then we'll average and it will work perfectly. So, um, and then one more page down is kind of an overview of where we're at, and I think I just went through this quickly, but at the October 21st meeting, you'll be making your recommendations within the budget that you have. And then we'll be averaging and we'll be advising the grantees of the grant amount awarded. We'll need for you to return your evaluations to me, whether it's pictures or hard copy or whatever you want to do there. I'll be in touch then with each of the grantees. And so far, I'd say probably everybody except for Four Valleys is probably going to be completing a change to their budget because we've already changed two more. Those revision forms will be due February 1st. If you have a grant that you're closing out in 2024, we'll need your end of year report by January 31st. And once we have all of that in, we'll start issuing contracts. And it's of course important to recognize that funding is contingent on the approval of the GBSA budgets by the municipality. Last year, we were super successful getting our money out from the muni really quickly. So I think getting the request in before the election in April just catches everybody before there's a bunch of other stuff to do. And the legal department, they run through a whole channel of approvals. And we've gotten stuck in that process in the past. So if we can aim to get everything in, that would be helpful. Or maybe it was just really good luck last year, I don't know, but we can try again. And then from here, I think the plan is to go into the presentations, the order that I selected and that is that the materials are in, isn't what we need to do. So you are welcome to change the order however you like.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, so can we, well, I know what you just said, but is Challenge the first one in the, in the current packet? It is. It is, because I saw it. Okay. So Challenge Alaska, you are up if you would like to come forward or unmute.
Absolutely. Where would you like me?
Right there.
That's the hot seat? Well, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. My name's Nate Bolts and it is absolute privilege to serve as the Executive Director of Challenge Alaska. I'm thrilled to be entering our 44th ski season here in the Glacier Valley, where Challenge Alaska is always called home. Starting from a broom closet with less than a dozen people in the swamp, Challenge now provides services to roughly 1,000 unique individuals relying on the selfless service of over 100, over 400 volunteers and offering programs on nearly 340 days per year with an impact on roughly 6,000 individuals across all of our events. We offer a wide range of programs for youth and adults living with physical and developmental disabilities. Our current program offerings include the Ski and Ride School here in Girdwood, five disabled hockey teams, Nordic skiing, water skiing, paracycling programs, wheelchair basketball, wheelchair soccer, wheelchair lacrosse, adaptive rock climbing, fishing, hiking, camping, archery, biathlon, even wheelchair pickleball, and for this year, the first time, adaptive dance. We also have dedicated programs for veterans living with disability, including Alpine skiing and snowboarding, warrior hockey, Nordic skiing, biathlon, precision shooting, road and mountain biking, and golf. What I'm getting at is if you're an Alaskan living with a disability and you're looking for a way to get out and recreate in this wonderful playground that we all live in, Challenge Alaska is going to make that happen for you. This year, we're expanding, we expanded the program offerings we have here in Girdwood beyond the Ski and Ride School and the cycling excursions we've been offering for the last few years. And we've created our first ever dedicated summer camp to young adults living with autism spectrum disorder called Summit Camp. This camp proved to be highly impactful. This demographic of individuals is usually one that slips between the cracks of aging out of youth-focused programs and services and either not ready or not interested in more adult-facing activities and services. It was an amazing, amazing week and we can't wait to repeat it and expand upon it in 2025. Having started in Girdwood and being as public-facing as we are here in Girdwood, Challenge Alaskans considers Glacier Valley to be our home. Because of that, we try to be as community-minded as possible in everything we do. In the last year, Challenge provided nearly $30,000 in programming and services to our neighbors here in the Glacier Valley. Some of the highlights include a $6,400 fee reduction for the Girdwood Fine Arts Camp, which I was thrilled to enroll my six-year-old daughter in this year and she had an amazing time. What an incredible program that is. We also had nine other complimentary or extremely discounted facility rentals for other Girdwood-based organizations and family. Things like meeting spaces, weddings, memorials, parties for Aliaska Ski Club, Aliaska Ski Patrol. Unfortunately, you know, memorial services as well as graduation parties and trainings at a value of over $6,000 through the year. We provided scholarship to adaptive ski and snowboard lessons to five local Girdwood residents living with disability and provided or trained, we provided training or PSI certifications for 31 local Girdwood residents as well. As an employer, we do everything that we can provide a living wage for six Girdwood residents and have begun the process of moving away from a seasonal workforce to a year-round workforce here in Girdwood. Extremely excited about that. We provide value to local businesses by providing them with, by promoting them with things like our week-long Spring Fling fundraiser with activities like the Girdwood Grub Crawl, as well as promoting them on our Thankful Thursday Facebook posts. I'm extremely proud of the team that we have, the progress we've made and the impact that we have in this amazing community. We look forward to continuing to increase our value-adding impact to the community of Girdwood in coming years. We're extremely grateful to the municipality of Anchorage Parks and Rec and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors for the use of these grant funds in the past. And we can't thank you enough for your consideration of funding for us again this year. Thank you so much. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Bolts. If anyone has questions, please go for it.
I see it says on your paperwork, you have five paid staff, but I think you said six, are you increasing?
Actually, well, no, we have five paid staff devoted to the Kyle Center and our operations here in Girdwood. But our Development Director also lives here in Girdwood, so I include her in our total Girdwood employee base. But yes, we are growing.
All right. If there aren't any other questions, thank you very much. And we will go to our next presenter from Girdwood Art Institute.
Hi there. My name is Tommy O'Malley and I am the President of the Girdwood Art Institute, which runs the Girdwood Fine Arts Camp. We just finished our 39th season and it was wonderful. It was my favorite one, mostly because I wasn't in charge of things anymore. I got called to come and present tonight. Yeah, I went for coffee and if they needed more duct tape, I went for things like that. The grant that we've asked for over the last many years goes for three basic things. One is for scholarships, for anybody that, any local kid that wants a scholarship. They're not based necessarily on need or on talent. But just to allow more kids to, to participate. Also, we have a sibling scholarship program, so if a family has more than one child, the, the family just pays for the first child and all the other subsequent children that are enrolled, get enrolled for free. And so this, the grant from Parks and Recreation goes to these two scholarships. Another part of the portion of the grant goes to the apprenticeship program. And the apprenticeship program, we started about five years ago when we noticed that kids were either aging out of the arts camp or they felt like they needed to earn money or needed to do things for their scholarship folders, like public service. So we hire former arts camp, arts campers and they get a stipend of $500. It's, it's a lot for a 14, 15, 16-year-old for two weeks of work. And they, they work for, let's see it. It's like $10 an hour, basically. They volunteer often as much as they were paid to be there. But they, they work with individual students to reduce the ratio from staff to students to about one to six. And they assist the art instructors because they know where everything is, so they can go and get things for people. Clean brushes, they, they participate in the art lessons themselves and they're considered staff. In some cases, they teach art lessons under the supervision of directors. One of our apprentices taught stained glass after learning from Jim Kaiser and Kate Toohey. The third part goes into operations of our winter series. We've started, I learned this fall that the Anchorage School District doesn't offer art classes for middle school students anymore. That's sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And so in September, I taught portraiture at the, at the high, at school here for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And we've also, we were planning on doing a winter series of classes for grownups to get more people involved and more, offer more recreational activities. So in September, we had finger painting for grownups and stained glass for adults and middle schoolers. For the most part, these classes are tuition-free. The arts camp pays for any costs that are associated with the, the class. We'll pay for the instructor's time and for the materials that are used. And there is a small fee for registration. And if that ever becomes an issue, we pay for the registration at Four Valleys Community School. Because we want as many people to participate as possible. So we have classes scheduled through March. October is Play-Doh for adults, Zeotropes, those are like primitive motion pictures. Another stained glass class, and these are open to middle schoolers and adults. We're going to make robots in November using AI, that's artistic intelligence. We're going to be teaching the art of delicious with pie baking in December. FEMA tree ornaments for kids 10 years and older. We're teaching an ice carving, ice carving for kids and ice carving for adults at the Alaska Botanical Gardens in Anchorage. In January, wire jewelry and printmaking and collage. Silk scarf painting in February, in March, and caustic landscapes. So we have one or two classes, maybe sometimes three classes a month, that we're offering pretty much free of charge. And we're able to do this because we have the cooperation of private businesses. Alpen Glow and the Girdwood Brewery allow us to have classes there as long as we don't use glitter. No glitter. And the community schools handles registration. We are privileged to use Challenge Alaska for the arts camp in the summer. And that, not having to have our own facility, really helps our, our budget. We, we really rely on other community partners in that. Yeah, so the, what we're, what we're asking for is a continuation of something that's been really successful. I don't know how long you guys have been offering this. Years and years. We're, we're fiscally responsible, we are. The tuitions that we do gather are, account for about a quarter to a third of our total operating expenses. We're doing a little bit better than Harvard for their tuition. And what that requires us to do is to do a lot of diversified fundraising. And so this is, is part of it. I know there is, it's competitive and whatever you guys can, want to spread it around. So whatever you guys can offer, that would be great. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for recreation for adults. We're trying to concentrate on adults and teenagers this year, but we also have classes for kids. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Tommy. Questions from the board? I have one. In the application, it's specifically stating the Girdwood Fine Arts Camp. So all the new offerings for middle school and adults and all ages in the upcoming months, is that still under Girdwood Fine Arts Camp?
Yeah, we're calling it our winter series, even though it's fall and spring too. The arts camp is, is for children ages five to about 15. And so the winter series is open to, more for grownups and for middle school students. So that's about 10 or 11 years old and up. We do have some classes like the FEMA tree ornaments for children. We're trying to get more people involved in recreation and art. Yeah, but it's, it's a fine arts camp, winter series.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think that might change number eights. Fill in the blank spots, but we'll know in a few months. So thank you, Tommy. Any other questions? If there aren't any questions, we can go to the Girdwood Community Club.
Hello, my name is Louis Leonard. I'm the President of the Girdwood Community Club. It's nice to see our fellow non-propheteers in the room tonight, as we do every year here. And the club thanks the supervisors here and the Parks and Rec Department and Kyle for all the efforts that they make for this and our program. And without the efforts of our community, this awesome eclectic communication resource of Glacier City Radio wouldn't exist. This grant request is for the operation of the only non-commercial, listener-supported, locally-operated, community FM radio station in Glacier Valley. The Girdwood Community Club has been providing services to Girdwood for over 70 years. The history of the club is the history of Girdwood. It is truly the local legacy organization as the oldest institution in Glacier Valley. Glacier City Radio is one of the many projects of the club that have built and defined the area. This grant-funded program falls into eligibility category two. It fills a need and it can't be met by municipality as effectively or efficiently or is not being met by another agency in the community. KUOL now has a takeout window. We call it the Hot Traps Meal Deal. You can now take Glacier City Radio with you wherever you go. There is a link to our stream on our website at glaciercity.us. Well, Glacier City Radio is run entirely by volunteers and management to programming, providing recreational opportunities in our facilities in a diverse audio, music, computer, library, research, skill building, electronic operating environment, as well as massive recreational listening by residents and visitors. FM 88.9 is economic beacon attracting visitors and travelers from Anchorage and the long turning an arm. The building that we are using in the park was built by the club as Girdwood School in 1950, a few doors down from Little Dipperina in Old Girdwood. When we began radio operations in 1997, our initial investment was about $400 for a five-disc CD changer, a microphone, a build-it-yourself transmitter and a stuff sack and a TV antenna to spread our minimal signal through Glacier Valley. Now, our facilities are a high-quality Class A FM radio station, recognized by the Federal Communications Commission. We are very fortunate to have received this community's support for the last 25 years to build such an awesome, enduring, and endearing resource for our community. We provide a public safety net in times of emergencies. Radio is immediate. It is the only medium that provides It is the only medium that provides fast networking, messaging, communications and interaction to thousands of people and available to everyone, most everywhere for free. We are a main link in the chain of disaster preparedness. The station is an insurance policy that we hope we don't need. But when we have, it has proven over and over to be the most reliable for connecting our community to emergency information. Cell phones, Facebook or the internet fail in comparison. We are social justice programs and presenters for the large number of voices and subjects, providing a better understanding of many issues, contributing to our good health and wellbeing. Our membership in the Pacifica Radio Affiliate Network provides us with programming from other worldwide stations, as well as allowing KEOL provide programming to the entire network. Our presenters are ambassadors to the world through Pacifica's audio port. Our 16 local programmers provide 36 hours on the air weekly. And we are currently broadcasting 47 weekly programs from around the country, writing 78 hours of D-voice verses from around the planet. And what do I say D-voice verses when we're talking mostly about music? Well, music is news of the world. Music itself tells stories and the presenter tells what is happening in their social sphere in their part of the country. Some of them also present arguments for social justice. All of this informs us of the relevancy and how we deal with these issues in our own community. Many organizations in Girdwood use us to pass information about their activities. Local on-air personalities strengthen the sense of community with information on public issues, including community organizing, events and broadcasts of the Girdwood Board of Supervisors meetings. In addition to our worldly, cutting-edge talk and music, our air staff broadcasts times of disturbing conditions and avalanche warnings, passing information from the Girdwood Fire Department on fire danger and road hazards. And we participate in the federal, state and local emergency alert system that includes weather warnings and the child abduction amber alerts. When you add up all the little things that we do, they become really big and we are available to the community 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. The airwaves belong to the public and every one of us has an important point of view to express. At KEOL, we believe that there is strength and beauty in our diversity. In most places in the US and the world, common citizen has no physical access to broadcast media. Even in the United States, few areas are served by community access broadcasting like Glacier City Radio here in the Turning Arm area. We are fortunate here to have a resource like KEOL and its volunteers like you all here in this room that help protect and develop our community free speech on the radio station. When you go to mark up your evaluation worksheets, remember we have an excellent track record, quite reasonable fees, adequate facilities, funding from local businesses, meet all the definitions of recreation and have good volunteer support. Thank you for considering Glacier City Radio and Girdwood Community Club in your Parks and Recreation Grant Program.
Thank you, Louis Leonard. Any questions? Sorry, I didn't unmute. Not hearing or seeing any right now. So if there are none, we'll, thank you very much for your presentation. And we will go to the Glacier Valley Transit.
Good evening, everyone. Board, I'm Steve Bartholomew with Glacier Valley Transit. And I'm gonna be using my teleprompter here tonight. Um, Glacier Valley was, uh, founded in 2008. Glacier Valley Transit was. Prior to that, Girdwood did not have public transportation. Elyeska Resort ran a shuttle that took its guests from the lower parking lots to the tramway, uh, also up to the hotel and the day lodge into local restaurants by request. Most residents did not have any form of public transportation at that time as an option. Uh, after being founded in 2008, uh, they moved to a nonprofit situation, a 501(c)(3) in 2010. Uh, developed a management agreement with the resort that allows them to really, to lease employees from the resort. Uh, and that actually allows the employees to have great benefits, including seats and passes. Uh, same benefits that an Elyeska Resort employee would have, uh, including, uh, healthcare. GBT is overseen by a volunteer board. Its board members are residents who live and are active here in the community of Girdwood. Uh, the benefits that GBT allows for Girdwood are it enhances our mobility of our community and its residents. The locals can use the free service to get anywhere they need in town, including, uh, restaurants, grocery stores, uh, local businesses, to and from trailheads, uh, and to some great skiing. By utilizing the bus, uh, in GBT, it reduces our traffic congestion in the valley. It also cuts down on DUIs and drunk driving during the winter season. Or year round. It comes over winter, but, uh, and many of the, the locals use the transportation to get to work. It's a wonderful thing. Uh, I've noticed people pick them up in the morning. They're all happy to be on the bus, happy to get to work on time. So how do we keep the wheels rolling? It's a little more than just putting the buses in neutral and rolling down the hill. We need to get back up the hill. Uh, those are, those things are the gas, tires, oil. They're all covered under a 5311 FTA Rural Transportation Grant, and it covers the majority of our expenses. We are required to match or to raise funds and match that grant. Um, we do have a shortfall, but most of that is covered by our service agreement with Elyeska. The contract provides bus stops at the tram loop, the hotel, overflow parking and the day lodge. We also provide additional services for larger events such as the Forest Fair and, and, uh, happenings throughout Girdwood. We do receive small grants from the municipality of Anchorage, 20,000 from the annual transportation budget and the Parks and Rec nonprofit grant. Local business sponsorships and onboard donations also help keep the wheels rolling. In 2016, Glacier Valley Transit went with a fare-free, went fare-free and began to offer a flex route. Our grant required us to reduce our reimbursements by the amount of the fares collected. Collecting onboard donations instead of fares allowed us to access all of the grant funds awarded each year. We were no longer leaving money on the table. Prior to the fare-free model, we were operating at an average loss of 60,000 a year. This shortfall was being borrowed from Elyeska. Since adopting the fare-free model, we went, we have broken even every year. So our mission is to provide safe, reliable, free transportation for residents in the valley and visitors alike. Establishing a community funding allows us to remain self-sufficient and, uh, sustainable. All right. In 2019, GBT transported approximately 95,000 passengers and collected over 20,000 in onboard donations. In 2020, we're on track to 100,000 riders and donate, we were on track to 100,000 riders and donations were trending higher each month. Like everyone else, we took a big hit in ridership with the COVID restrictions and shutdowns. We continue to operate at a reduced, uh, we continued to operate at a reduced schedule and reduced capacity throughout the pandemic. In the last three years, we have seen a steady increase in ridership and our donations annually. Local ridership definitely continues to be on the rise. So what's new in 2024? We replaced our double map with TransLook. We have had a rocky start with this, uh, but working hard with a provider to make the app a little more reliable. We're using technology behind the scenes as well for maintenance and our scheduling. We have a new refreshed website. We were finally able to order a new bus to replace an older vehicle with over 360,000 miles on it. A lot of miles going up and down Elyeska Highway. This bus will arrive in time for the ski season. A second replacement bus will be ordered this winter, putting us back on track for a regular replacement schedule. Sam Marshall, our operations manager, for nearly 10 years, left Elyeska, or left Alaska last summer to be closer to family. Steve, me, myself, I, I took over his position in July. And I'm proud to be doing it. It's, uh, very enjoyable. Excited to host a turkey trot again this year. Uh, we love this and it's become a Thanksgiving tradition here in the valley for many of the families in the community. We hope to see you there. We would like that all of you on the Girdwood Board of Supervisor, like to thank you all on the Girdwood Board of Supervisors for your continued support of public transportation in the valley. Any questions?
Questions for Steve? Thank you so much, Steve.
You're welcome.
Steve, good question. Um, so is the $26,000 here, is that what you're raising in the, in the cab of the buses from, uh, from ridership?
Yeah.
Oh, and so that 26,000 includes local sponsorship?
That's, sponsorships are different.
Yeah.
Um, so.
So yes.
The local donation.
Right on. Thank you.
Sorry, I couldn't. So am I understanding correctly? You said you had, um, almost 100 or you were on track to get to 100,000 in 2020? And then it's so at 73,000 this year, is that?
I think last year was either 73 or 75.
Okay.
So we're, it seems like we're going up about 20,000 riders the past three years.
Okay. Well, I just, just vaguely curious, like are you, am I understanding that's kind of equipment and app issues? It might be part of the reason why you're not up to the ridership from 2020? Or is there a reason why it was like, I mean, it just seems like that's really high compared to, even though you're steadily increasing now, right?
I think it's back to full, close to full service now. We didn't, this is the first year we've had two buses in the winters, I mean, in the summer. And last winter, first winter, we started servicing for the sits again. And I think they're just, it's heavy snow here too. Uh, so it does kind of fluctuate based on visitors in that, to that way. But I believe, yeah, we're pretty much back at a variable, there's a P, we've reduced our service.
Okay, all right. So it wasn't necessarily reflective of the riders, it was like with the service that could be provided. Got it, got it.
Tourism is back.
Okay, great.
Thank you. And, uh, online, the audio was a little bit muffled for the first question that Supervisor Brian asked. So could you please clarify the answer?
The 26,000 is onboard donations or local donations from community members.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Glacier Valley Transit? If not, thank you very much. And we'll go to Little Bears next.
Hi, guys. I'm, I'm just gonna make a disclaimer that I am solo parenting and have a one-year-old and a six-year-old in the house. So if things become noisy, I do apologize on behalf of that. Um, okay. So Little Bears Playhouse is in an amazing pivotal time in our life. And we have a lot going on in all different ways. But specifically for this grant, it's really dedicated to, um, this new program we started this summer, which is, you know, the Artist for the Day Program. So, I know, sorry. Um, you know, our mission is to provide an intentional and engaging, nurturing learning environment. Our curriculum is really focused on hands-on learning and learning through play. Um, as we find that to be the best, uh-oh, best way for children to learn. Um, and we really believe in promoting a positive self-concept with a safe and healthy environment and opportunities for self-discovery, socialization and creativity through a child-centered program. Little Bears has been around, as everybody knows, for quite some time. Um, since 1982, we've been a licensed childcare facility. We are now providing care to 36 children, approximately 33 families, uh, with their families with siblings. So that's an increase from last year. Um, we're at maximum capacity every day enrolled. Um, we have eight full-time staff caregivers. Um, and we are really relying on fundraising support from local, our local community and small grants to help support the financial needs of Little Bears. So in 2024, so far, things have been going very great for Little Bears. We've increased the amount of staff that are currently working on their CDA, which is its Child Development Associate Credential. It's a nationally recognized credential. So we have, uh, more staff who have completed and more staff who are now beginning. We have entered into a learning grow program, which is a quality improvement initiative that's nationwide. And it's to continue to enhance our knowledge and our abilities within the early childhood education field. Um, in our new building efforts, we started a campaign called Everyone for Girdwood. And we've raised over $71,000 just from local individuals and businesses to help Little Bears reach its new facility. Uh, we also received 100,000, $100,000 from Chugash Powder Guides. And that was amazing. It was outside of the Everyone for Girdwood campaign, so I just wanna note that there. We've secured 350,000 from Rasmussen, 500,000 from State of Alaska. And we are moving forward on construction for our new facility. Um, probably been out there in Track B and see that the lot has been cleared, it's been grubbed. We have a utilities bid accepted and work is supposed to be beginning within a week or so. And we have our GC, um, selected and contracted and we're moving forward. For this grant specifically, we started the Artist for the Day Program and it was a huge success and it was an amazing process. We had six local artists come and spend the day with our preschool class, teaching them their, uh, medium of art. And it was unbelievable. With the funds, we increased the art materials within both classrooms to continue to bring these experiences to the children after the artist last, left. And we also purchased the CDA trainings and, uh, the top subscription to a training platform. With these artists, we had stained glass from Jim Kaiser come in, Liz Ellis with her paintings, Amanda Thompson with fiber art. Meg Rice did an entire day of tie-dye with the children, which was then, uh, subsequently used for some fundraising, as well as the children getting to take some of it home. And Carrie Quaid came in with live materials and created fairy gardens with the children. With this, we saw just an amazing outcry from the parents, from the community, from the artists. All the artists volunteered their time and materials were reimbursed for, um, all of them in that sense. Um, we're already kind of trying to look ahead and we've been reaching out to more artists to get them on the books just to continue doing this now through the fall and through the winter. Um, we're looking at doing some quilting and ceramics and, um, crocheting. And it's just an amazing experience for the children and their families. Um, the community and parent volunteers was an amazing thing. And in early childhood education, that's one of the biggest things you wanna see is the parents involved in their children's time. And this was, I mean, every single artist, there was a minimum of six or seven parents at least who were coming in, taking time off of work to engage and help during the process. The children were so attentive, um, especially with, uh, the stained glass. And that was an amazing experience watching them use new tools. Um, parents are already asking for an expansion of the program, hoping to have music somehow incorporated. And I'm not quite sure how to do that one yet, but, um, we're definitely looking at it. Um, the children got to create classroom art that hung on the walls. Um, and it just created this amazing sense of community and pride within themselves. Um, so this grant will continue to provide this program. It's created an art outlet for children that are too young to join the amazing Girdwood Arts Camp. And we're really dedicated to providing them with this hands-on experience. They may not have exposure to outside of our facility. And we're just so grateful for the Girdwood Valley Service Area Grant and GBOSS for always considering us and supporting us through the years. Oh, baby. That was it. Sorry, I miss. It's hard to be solo parent sometimes. So we just want to really thank you. You guys have always been such a strong backbone for us and we're so grateful. And the opportunities that these children got to have this summer were just unbelievable. And so I really thank you for your support. And if there are any questions, I would love to answer them.
Thank you, Rachel, and for your young support there. That was really timely throughout, really. Any other question or any questions for Rachel? I don't hear any or see any. So thank you very much and for staying on this evening. And we will go next to Four Valleys Community School.
I'm going to be page DA.
I'm just going to pay for the job.
On the side. Oh, there you go. That's part of it. If you back up, you'll be able to start there. That's it. Thanks.
Steve, I'm also seeing my little prompter tonight.
Hi, everybody. My name is Bex Remley and I work for Four Valleys Communities, locally-based nonprofit dedicated to enriching our Girdwood community through diverse events and educational opportunities. I think we're also going into 44 years this year. And our mission remains clear, to provide accessible programs for all ages right here in Girdwood. Four Valleys serves as a vital resource for recreational and social opportunities. Thanks to our MOA with the Anchorage School District, we have access to the Girdwood K school gym and classrooms after school hours, allowing us to continue hosting a wide range of activities. The funding we receive from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors is crucial for our year-round operations and helps us keep program costs low and accessible for all residents. Our offerings include indoor and outdoor sports, art and cooking classes, educational talks and workshops, Nordic skiing, cross-country running, yoga, and more. All events tailored to the community's needs and wants. We started this school year with a classic and launched the Cross Country Running Club again in September. Thank you, Brianna. More participants were exploring local trails. This year, we're also really excited to introduce Girdwood Explorers with Tim Leiden, where kids have enjoyed outdoor team-based activities and learning about community organizations like Parks and Rec, the Fire Station in Elieska Resorts, and Lunt's Dog Program. Super cute. These programs alone in September reached over 40 individual participants aged five through 13. In addition to these programs, we have a full schedule of indoor youth sports such as basketball, volleyball, and baseball, as well as enriching art classes hosted by local artists and Girdwood Fun Arts. Thank you, Tommy. Kung Fu programs and a few upcoming cultural storytelling events in collaboration with the school librarian. Our volunteer-run Nordic Ski Club will be active this January and February, once again utilizing our stunning valley trails. These are expected to have approximately 120 individual participants, also ages five through 13. Our Tuesday night pickleball league and Wednesday night adult basketball league have remained community staples, drawing 20 to 30 participants weekly in the school gym. It's pretty intense. The GBOSS funds have helped keep drop-in participant fees at a very low price point, about $5, at least $20 a month to play, encouraging both newcomers and regulars to attend weekly. We also offer a range of wellness classes, including strength training, breathwork, and meditation, with instructors combis early thanks to the program revenue and GBOSS financial support. Our partnership with the Wildlife Center means Wildlife Enrichment Classes still happen weekly on Mondays and or Thursdays. And with consistent staff hours, we've been able to maintain open track access for the community during weekday evenings. As it gets rainier and colder, this is much more utilized by all ages. I have families coming with little kids and I have adults and then I walk it with friends when I'm not working well. We are also really happy to continue with our preschool social program, Ron Bernur, which has upped into Little Bears, thanks to dedicated volunteer moms who've been really passionate about creating this fun, safe space for children under the age of five every Monday and Thursday morning through the school year. During the summer, our weekly day camps blended recreation, education, and cultural activities and relied on community spaces such as Forest Fair Park, local trails, and the Earlberg Soccer Field locally. We're really grateful for the ongoing support from Girdwood Parks and Rec in managing these important facilities. This past summer, we had over 100 different participants across all programs, including soccer. We strive to collaborate with other local nonprofits, assisting with events like the Girdwood Fun Arts Camp and Annual Fungus Fair, which both have a larger-than-local reach. These programs reached over 200 participants this last year. We have also been able to partner promote events with the Forest Service, Glacier District, as well as conservation effort events through Prince William Sound Stewardship Foundation. They have a slugout in Wood Ear. And they also do like the potato gardening here locally. And the Forest Service has tried to expand their local offerings and like workshop talks. And we've been able to help promote them and like help them gain that traction just through like posting it through our media outlets. As a community center-style organization, our newsletters and social media platforms are well-used for helping raise awareness for all relevant community events, not just FPCS revenue-gaining ones. With an average of over 100 dedicated volunteers each year, our community sport is invaluable. The affordability of our programs remains a key concern and this GBOSS grant plays a vital role in helping subsidize these costs, ensuring as many residents as possible can participate. We are committed to serving our community year-round and this grant allows us to do this excessively. Thank you, GBOSS, for your continued support of Four Valleys Community School. And thank you all for your continued support through volunteering. Any questions?
Thank you, Bex. Questions for Bex? Don't hear or see any. So thank you, Bex, for coming in and presenting. All right, next we have the Turnigan Arm Mycological Society.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kate Mohat, President of the Turnigan Arm Mycological Society.
And I'm Sharon Samuels and I am a volunteer member of the Turning in Arm Mycological Society.
GBOSS have been coordinating the fungus fair the last year. It's a major, big task. So a little bit about the fungus fair, it was started in 2008, actually maybe a year or two before that, as a couple of Four Valleys classes, where we recognized that there was a ton of interest by the public in learning more about mushrooms. And so we started the fungus fair in 2008. This will be our 17th year that we just completed. And we were able to get the event off the ground because of a generous donation from Don Byrne at Elieska Resort. He supported about $5,000 annually for at least the first three, eight years of the event. And that really got us off the ground. Around 2017, we formed the Turnigan Arm Mycological Society to help put on this event as it grew in popularity and is a way to also build a more sustainable income to keep the event going. I'll turn it over to Sharon to talk about the nuts and bolts of the event.
So the, we are entirely volunteer-run organization. When we put on the fungus fair, we do have support from Four Valleys Community School.
Thank you.
Which they help run all of our reservations and check-ins for the event, for all of our forays and workshops. And then we also get support from the Glacier Ranger District because they store all of our fungus fair stuff for us at no cost to us. And they also send team members down to help with the setup and takedown of the event, which can be quite extensive. This is the first time we've asked for additional funds. As Kate said, the Turnigan Arm Mycological Society formed in 2017, we're under the umbrella of Girdwood Incorporated. And we, most of what we do is run the fungus fair. We kind of take December off, sort of. But every other month, we're working on getting the fair up and going. It is just a two- or three-day event. It's three days for the mycologists and all the event volunteers, and it's two days for the public. And then there's a couple of days before and after the event where the visiting mycologists get to also do collections here in the state, in the valley, in our region. And Kate can talk a little bit more about the scientific value of that, that we're helping to promote. The event is primarily a mycology and science focus. We do get a tremendous amount of art interest in the fair every year, but our capacity is to just focus on the science. So that's what makes us unique for an event here in the valley. It is accessible to all ages, interests, and level of knowledge. And we, the primary event is free. All the informational talks are free, the displays are free. And then we have paid workshops and forays, and that's part of our fundraising that allows us to continue to do the fairs, the funds that we receive from that. The individuals who do the forays and run the workshops are primarily volunteers. And so they don't get paid for that. We have one organization that comes in, a business that comes in and we pay them to be here, but everything else is volunteer. And so the money comes back to the fair. And the fair promotes outdoor activity. It promotes STEM education. Last year, the Girl Scouts in Girdwood all got their fungus badge, so pay STEM education. And this year, we had a group of STEM junior high school students who came and participated in the fair as one of their activities. And I, they think they came from Bethel. So it'd be nice to continue to promote STEM education through the fair. There's also a big citizen science component. We run a MycoBlitz every year. And a MycoBlitz is run through iNaturalist. And citizen scientists go out into the forest and woods here around Girdwood and collect specimens. And they report them in the app. This year, we had 266 specimens collected by 42 different participants and identified 108 different species through that app. So we're excited about that. It's also a nice physical activity because you get to go out, walk through the woods. We use all the trails in the valley. We use the Girdwood Park, we use the community room. So a lot of the Girdwood Parks and Recreation. You call that the Girdwood Parks and Recreation stuff. We use it all. And when I was putting this grant together, we're promoted on the Girdwood Parks and Recreation page as an activity that uses the Girdwood Parks and Recreation stuff. So that was kind of fun. And primarily, we want this event to be sustainable and that's why we are starting this process of asking for grant funding. We're asking from the Girdwood Valley Board of Supervisors, but we're also looking at some other grant and sponsorship opportunities. And everybody that comes to participate in the fair also eats, stays, and plays otherwise in Girdwood. So we promote the local places that you can eat and stuff while we're here. We have a QR code so people can go out and know where to go to eat at restaurants while they're visiting here in town. So it does bring money in at a time of year when tourism starts to drop off. So that's nice. And again, we do want this to be sustainable. And what we've found is that hosting the mycologists is becoming more expensive as costs go up for airfare, vehicle rental, accommodations, and just providing them a per diem. And we do have volunteer members who provide housing, provide meals, loan cars. But in addition to just renting those things, we'd also like to give back something to the volunteers that just provide those things to us. So. That is, you wanted to talk briefly about our super science?
Sure. Here's some fungus facts. So we just got the species list back from this year from Steve, who's been a returning mycologist for the last 15 of the 17 years. And over the 17 years we've been doing this, we've documented over 400 species either collected in Girdwood or brought into the fair from the surrounding areas. And so over the 17 years, except for COVID, we have a running list of species for each year, which is a result that in accumulation of data, the frequency and commonness of the species. Because mushrooms are ephemeral, they don't come up year after year. All of them, you might see one every 20 years or something. This dataset's really unique and valuable and it's the only state of Alaska. And many of the 415 species on the list can only be identified by specialists within these hyperdivers and poorly studied genera. So bringing in these outside mycologists is really valuable. And in general, mycologists are undervalued. They'll work for cheap, but they would like to get something. And they're rarely compensated for their expertise well. So in Alaska, while Alaska is a draw for mushroom enthusiasts, the Girdwood Fungus Fair is unique within the state because we offer honorariums for their expertise. And that's resulted in a dedicated group of several experts willing to spend a week of their time every year to help us put on this event. And when they're not helping with the event, like Sharon mentioned, they're out collecting and describing our fungi. And that's resulted in three published field guides. Two of them are out now. Mushrooms in the Pacific Northwest, Volume Two by Steve Trudell is, about half the photos are in there are from Girdwood. Mushrooms of Alaska is coming out next year. It's sitting with Timber Press and the number one entity in that acknowledgement page is the Girdwood Fungus Fair for bringing these people up here. So that's going to be a tremendous resource for the whole state. So supporting the fungus fair supports a generally underfunded and understudied field in which many members of the public have a strong interest in learning more. So we're able to provide that sorely needed public education while also contributing to science.
And I have one more thing to say, and that is we have brought a number of female mycologists and women in science to the fair year over year. And so I'm proud of that, that we're promoting women in science here in our Girdwood Valley.
And we've been provided Daniel Easton's foundation funding in previous years. This is a Pacific Northwest funding source for providing travel.
So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kate, and thank you, Sharon, very much. Any questions from the board?
I, this is Jennifer. I have another disclosure. I don't know what I was thinking. I kind of forgot that my son is the co-founder of Turning In Arm Mycological Society. Technically, like not actually, because he was 10 at the time, so I wouldn't say that he did all the work. But he's been at least entitled the co-president, and I would say heavy on the title, like, but anyway.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think that qualifies as a fungi fact, too. It will not excuse you from participating in this.
I also wanted to say, it's not a question, but I feel like it's worth mentioning that you are, Kate, one of the authors of the book, you know? Because I think that's pretty amazing. And then also, for the sake of my son here, he would give me a hard time of, "Mr., like, I'm only into mushrooms because of, well, basically you." It's more or less your fault, publically entirely. And it really did completely change his life because he's now basing his entire college choice on who has the best mycology growth. But my question is, he would be mad at me if I didn't just ask Mr. Territorial if he's ever considered moving the location of the Girdwood Fungus Fair to Anchorage.
We've considered it. It's just a matter of where and who must take it on.
Okay.
Yeah. Because if all of the organizers are here, it's a ton of work.
Right.
And it's a lot of running back and forth, looking for tape and pencils and dumb things like that. Anyway, I think it'd be a challenge.
Great.
But if somebody in Anchorage is willing to take it on one year, we're certainly willing to help support that.
Thanks. Okay.
I don't know that it's relevant to grant funding, but how is the data about like the 416 species? How is it used? How does it like benefit the valley or our understanding of? Is it telling us about climate? Like, how are you guys using that?
We don't have enough information to know that, but fungi are very understudied organisms. And so we're getting a baseline of what species even exist here. And we're getting a concept of their distribution. You know, like South Central is in a really interesting transition zone between boreal and Pacific coastal. And so, for example, the mushroom I keep thinking of is this hydrophorus that's not going to be on the species list. It's been found one time. It's probably a new species in Girdwood. It's not been described anywhere else from what we can tell. I guess baseline, just baseline information on where, what species are around us. You know, we just have three species of conifers in this valley. So the cursor- So at a cursory glance, like this isn't a very diverse place. But when you start looking at the microbes, the lichens, the fungi, that's where the story is very different.
I think I would add, too, that the fungus fair, the timing of the fair has shifted in the 17 years that it's been put on.
Yes, we do have some climate.
So, and we haven't taken all the data we have and plotted it against the shifting season. But next year, we're shifting it again, one more week. So it's going to fall just after Labor Day.
Yeah, that's a good point. And this is a trend that we're seeing all up and down the West Coast. Mushroom seasons getting later and later every year, like growing seasons are getting longer.
And if you want to find a new species of something, you can very likely find it here in the valley.
Thank you. I see a question from Mike.
Yeah, it's kind of an observation than a question. Until last year or two, we were only giving grants to 401(c)(3)'s. And I see that you're not actually a 401(c)(3). You're fiscally sponsored by Girdwood, Inc. And we changed our rules a year or two ago to allow that. So I just wanted to sort of comment that we're, you know, one of the intents of that change was to allow some other organizations to apply for the grants and then acknowledging that you are. So thank you for that. I was going to ask on that topic, is the intention, longer term, to become a 401(c)(3) or are you going to stay under the fiscal sponsorship?
We've looked into, we're such a small group.
It's overwhelming.
It's just a weekend for the most part, and so it hasn't, and it really hasn't seemed worth it. And Girdwood, Inc. has been so fantastic at sponsoring us for all these years and so far hasn't seemed to want to boot us. So we're just kind of hoping to.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I have one for either Kate or Sharon, but I heard, I think Sharon mentioned members. And then in the application here, it says membership dues. So what does a member consist of?
Sure. So to share, the Ternigan Arm Mycological Society, we do have a membership. And when you're a member, you get a T-shirt. It's very cool. And then we have events that we do. So coming up this Saturday, we're having a member-only foray here in the valley. And then we do during the year, different events. So we'll have other forays. We have talks. We have gotten together and done like fungus feast just with club members, truffle feast. We've watched movies, so various things throughout the year. You may have seen us in the parade at the Forest Fair. So. And then members can all also help with setup and takedown of the fair.
Okay. Thank you. I was curious about that. All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing about that because, just because I've participated in this forever. I know it's part of our evaluation form that participation has to not be restricted by membership requirements. So I think, just connected to the answer to your question, just to clarify, there's no membership required at all for participation in the fungus fair, which is why you're applying for the grant.
Yes, that's correct. The membership fees contribute to our funds for the fungus fair. In.
Mostly they just buy a member of T-shirts.
Yeah, mostly it pays for the T-shirt.
I have that one, too. It's a very.
Well, great. We're learning more ways to donate and help our community, so, in other outside ways. Okay, any other questions? If not, thank you again very much. And that concludes our grant applicant's presentations, and we would go to public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Is anyone here for public comment tonight? Any in the room? Can't tell. So I think that means there's none. I didn't entertain a motion to adjourn.
But before that, just a second, Chair, if I may ask a question. As far as evaluation, this is my, this is my first opportunity to go through this evaluation process. And I want to confirm that it is, that it is in order to consult with my fellow GBOS members discussing the scoring and the presentations this evening.
Are you asking it outside of the meeting?
I'm asking outside of the meeting.
No.
This is.
Yep. You just come with the score that adds up to the 2250, 500? And then you make your evaluations based on what you see from.
Okay, so there's, there is no other evaluation opportunity for me outside of this meeting?
No. If you have any questions, we probably would have to now.
Okay, okay. So we've got this meeting.
And talk about it at the regular meeting.
At the regular meeting, yeah.
Where you make your final.
So at the meeting, and then the final is in November.
October.
Okay, October. Okay.
So you have.
Go ahead, Margaret, and then Mike.
I think that you could ask, you could chat with us.
Okay.
And understand the process.
Yep.
That's the question.
Yep.
And I mean, I have questions, too, because we have a new member who will be joining. So I, you know, I think most likely you will be seated for the October meeting. So that would mean that you could vote on this. So anyway, it's, it's great. It's dynamic. I hadn't thought about that part yet, but I do have a packet for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question, and this might, I apologize. I was like five minutes late. But the Little Bears, Four Valleys, and Girdwood Valley, are these applications in excess to the one listed? Because there's a 65,000, and then there's the fixed grants. Are you guys asking for more than the fixed or?
So this was something that came up at the last GBOS meeting, that GBOS approved a different funding amount than we were expecting or, you know, had been previously done. And so Mike put together a slide to explain. And so in the evaluation criteria that I'm providing to you, their original application reflects what was originally requested in their application. But in the evaluation page, I've used the funding amount that GBOS has approved in their 2025 budget.
You give a little back history. Before this budget for 2025, the only organization that was hard-funded was Four Valleys Community School at 25,000. And GBOS at the last meeting on the budget approvals, hard-funded Little Bears and Girdwood Valley Transit at those numbers. And then the rest is left open for the other applicants.
Okay, thank you for that.
But again, you know, this is new to two of you and not so new to the rest. And so by all means, if it's something that staff can answer, we'd be happy to talk with you about it.
Thank you all, and Mike is next.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the presenters. And this is, I really enjoy this meeting every year because it just reminds me of the breadth of nonprofits and activity there is in the community. So thank you, everybody. If I was there, I'd be giving you a round of applause, but you're not going to hear it very well over my headset, so.
Thank you, Mike. Please clap. I think it's great.
I'll do it on the screen.
There's clapping. Yay. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. And if there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.